All right, good evening and welcome to this special meeting of the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners. If everyone can join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna get this meeting underway. I know we have a lot of residents and business owners here. We want to make sure we have time to hear from you as well this evening. We have a quorum, so we are okay to go ahead and have our discussion and make a vote. So we are here tonight to vote on Resolution 2018-85, a declaration of disaster emergency for a Radnor Township based on the events of last Monday, the rainstorm that occurred. I'd like to ask Larry Bach, who's with the Delaware County Emergency Management Services, to come up and, do you want to come up here Larry, and give us a quick overview of what this means, what this sets in motion, and how this can potentially work to help the township and our residents. Thank you Larry for being here, we appreciate it.
Not a problem, I feel like I'm...
[laughter]
Here we go. Nobody go back there. All right, so, I'm gonna preface this by saying this is all, I'm shooting from the hip, because four hours ago I was on vacation. Pull this a little this way? How about now? Oh, there we are. Good evening. I'm sorry? Oh, okay. Anyway, so, as I said, they're looking at a disaster declaration for the township. That is a critical first piece that needs to occur under Home Rule Charter, under Commonwealth formal government. Everything starts at a local level, so this is an important first step. There are two pathways that are gonna be followed as we go through this. There is a port of the program, which I always think is unfortunately named Public Assistance, except it doesn't actually go to the public. It's for public property. So it goes more to governmental structures, authorities, and other groups like that, that hold things in the public interest. The second piece that will come into play, and that's all based on a per capita basis. The Commonwealth needs to get over eighteen million dollars worth of damages to get that piece started through the federal government. Delaware County needs to come up with about 1.8 million dollars, because with, as with most things, it's based on a per capita basis. So it's like, I think I wanted to say it's like 388 a person or something. Then the next piece that starts to become available is actually geared toward residents, individuals and families. It's a program through the Small Business Administration. So it's actually a program of low-interest loans that are available to the public. The pre-qualifier is that you have to have a forty percent of your property values uninsured loss, if that makes sense. I know you gotta think about that one for a minute. So if your home's worth a hundred thousand dollars, if you had forty thousand dollars in uninsured loss, you would become eligible for one of those loans. It's a loan, you still have to go through the whole loan process. It's a low-interest loan through the federal government, but that's how that would work. If we get twenty-five or more folks who feel they are eligible for that loan, we will bring in assessment teams from SBA, and they'll come in, and they'll, we'll take them out and start to show them the damages that have occurred. And then they'll kind of go, yep. And if they decide that everything's good, what will happen is they'll open a disaster assistance center, and, or a disaster resource center. And we'll find a place local for the communities that are involved, where folks will come and do their applications. So that would be that part of the process. So, two separate things. So like, we had the road that got washed out. I hear the school had some damages. Anything, you know, if a township building got washed out, say township vehicles were destroyed in the flood, any of that kind of stuff, that's in that public assistance piece. And actually, for the most part, we usually only get seventy-five percent of the value back for those pieces of equipment, those structures. Every once in a while PMA and the Commonwealth will get generous, and they'll make up that twenty-five percent, so you get a hundred percent payback. Don't expect it. If it happens, everybody can go, thank you, and we'll move on. For those residents that have issues, like I said, document your losses, start your recovery process. If you, you know, if you've had water damage to your home, start cutting the drywall out. Take it out, you know, in those, you know, two-foot, four-foot increments. Get that all out of there, so it doesn't keep wicking up, because it has that odd habit, that even though the waters have receded, the moisture will continue to kind of spread. So you want to make sure you get that out, get your carpets up. Do everything you can do. Just take pictures beforehand and then document as you go. And then, you know, if you get notice from your insurance company that you're not covered, figure out what's covered, what's not covered. If none of it's covered, then you're totally uninsured loss. If you, if they're gonna give you so much, based on whatever premise they're gonna give you, okay, the balance of that is your uninsured loss. Okay?
But again...
I know, this is...
Let's say our house is, our worth, two hundred.
Mm-hmm.
So it would have to be eighty K of uninsured...
Loss.
...in order to get a loan.
To get a loan.
Payback at a low interest.
Right.
Okay.
And then what's the flood insurance for?
Flood insurance will cover damages, and I'm not an expert on flood insurance by any stretch. And that's something really that if you have, if you've been buying flood insurance...
You're forcing...
Okay.
Five thousand dollars.
So...
It's not only covered, twenty-five years of premium, your sticks. If you're some way, not your washer dryer.
I, you know, I, I, sometimes, I know, sometimes, sometimes when the flood insurance people start to talk to me, I just kind of like, my eyes glaze over, and I'm just like, can, you know, where's my pencil? But, and I know that some, some folks who have been doing that, they, they've been able to get into what's either called the repetitive loss program, or the severe repetitive loss program. And that gets you on a pathway where you can, if you're willing to accept fair market value for your home, you might actually be able to settle and move out. I know then that's sometimes a bitter pill, you know, because when they come back and tell you what your fair market value is, you're like, really? You know, it's, it's a little bit of a shock. Again, not an expert on flood insurance and how they mechanize that whole process, but...
I think that's like, if I can say, at that, we're fortunate, because we're on the side of the street on Willow Avenue, that we do not have to basically review. We were somewhat told we were required to, but we were, and I was quite firm in saying, we don't have the level of flood concern that I need to have on our side of the street. Our neighbors on the other side of the street after what we experienced in the second storm, were then forced by their mortgage companies. But I think the township needs to understand the financial situation for those neighbors that are required to pay two, three thousand dollars a year, required by law.
By law.
They can't afford mortgage from the banks. However, I think the township needs to understand this financial situation.
So then they...
Their deductible is five thousand dollars.
I...
Because the numbers don't work. And so I understand you're not in the insurance business, neither is the township, but the township needs to understand the financial burden...
Oh, I think they hear you. Yeah.
...on top of the stormwater theme, and on top of the time, and the effort, and the energy, and the voice that has been expressed. We've been on the street for twenty years. We don't have finished basements and losing... We're not worried about drywall. Yeah. I'm worried about my teenage son. I have a video of him, because he was worried about his car, going out into the floodwater, which was a whitewater. We know the town has suffered an incredible tragedy with a young man who is severely damaged for the rest of his life because he went into the floodwaters. My seventeen-year-old son, as foolish as they are, it was a whitewater rapid down Willow Avenue. And I don't think the town is truly understanding that this isn't just about, oh, we have to get another washer and dryer. This is about a safety concern, this is about voices that have been expressed, and dollars from hardworking people that are being spent year after year after year. And yet, people don't want Northland Park ripped up. So, they have a project on the table, and that gets mixed, because they don't want to see the park ripped up. I guess maybe one of the reasons why that never got renewed, but...
Okay, so we'll definitely have public comment at the end, and we can, you know, hear those things as well. Larry, do you have anything you want to add, or any of the...
Yeah, I have two questions for you. The first is, can you tell me if the public assistance is gonna be in the form of loans or grants? And the second is, can you tell me, because you've talked about residents thus far, what about businesses? Are they under a different criteria than the forty percent?
Businesses can do loans for economic, like, lost economic earnings, which is an even more complicated process, because you'd have to demonstrate that during a given period of time, your earnings would have been this. So you have to use like prior year's earnings to demonstrate that, say in the, you know, the late July, early August, just to kind of block it out, like in that month time, that you would have made so much money, and show that historically that was true. And then they'll look at doing things, because it's Small Business Administration. So they'll look at doing things to try to balance that out a little bit. You know, again, it's kind of in the structure of loans. Everything SBA does is in the structure of loans.
A lot of our businesses are relatively recent opens, so are they gonna be able to qualify based on maybe surrounding businesses or similar businesses?
We can try. We can certainly try. I mean, we can, if there are enough businesses that are involved, I think again, the number is about twenty-five, you know, they'll get included in their own kind of, like, there'll be a process for residents, individuals and families, and there'd be a process for businesses if they wanted to look into doing that.
So then we need the Wayne Business Association, or somebody basically to coordinate twenty-five separate business people to come together and say, we've sustained losses?
Sure, and we can, we can follow up with them and talk to them some more about that, and get that, get that process started as well.
And can you tell us about the public assistance?
Public assistance is, it's, I guess the right word is grants. You know, again, it's not, it's typically not a hundred percent grant. It's gonna be seventy-five percent from the federal government, maybe twenty-five percent or less from the Commonwealth. The other piece that opens up is there's, based on your, what you, your contributions to the natural hazard mitigation plan that the county puts together, there's an opportunity, there's money that's set aside to go back and try to address some of these issues. So if there was something, you know, some project that was identified as being one that needed to be mitigated to prevent damages from stormwater, that's something that could be looked at, funding, you know, being made available to work on some of that.
So you're saying in addition to replacement of existing infrastructure, we could maybe focus on some new projects in order to mitigate future damages?
Exactly.
Is there a cap on funding for that?
It, it depends on the amount of money that's made available, because it's a percentage of the total disaster funds that are made available to the Commonwealth.
Because we've recently voted on a number of different projects that we're planning on funding out of our existing stormwater fund, but frankly, they're not going to solve the entirety of the problem. If we can use existing funds for the next project, and use funds that are being made available now for the currently pending projects, that would make things better.
Now, I will say, it's usually a competitive process, you know, but kind of the first key to admission is that it was something that was identified in the natural hazard mitigation plan as being a shortcoming that needed to have some work done on it. So that there is, there is a possibility that something could be done.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Larry, for residents who believe they meet the forty percent of uninsured loss, who do they submit their paperwork to?
We start that out with each township doing a collection. I mean, first, it's, you know, there's paperwork that, I know George has seen it at least once, you know, we'll do a fresh distribution of it, you know, as we get into the detailed stuff. I did just get, we're still in the preliminary process, so we're getting information on kind of the quantity of homes that are involved, so that we can, you know, make the claim to even have SBA come down. Once they come down, then we'll get into more of the detailed assessment. And there's, there's strange things, like somebody actually mentioned something about finished basements. It's, apparently, us folks up here in the Northeast are weird, and we actually finish our basements, because the folks from FEMA are just not used to that at all. A basement is a mechanical space. So when we try to explain that, a lot of people have finished basements that are nicer than the first floor of their home, they look at us like, what are you, crazy? We said, no, it's this common practice around here. You know, they make family rooms, party rooms, you know, offices, bedrooms, out of their basements. And they're like, what? So they're starting to get a little more lenient with that. I usually have to beat at least one of the evaluators over the head and bodily kind of take them in, have a couple of basements, and say, look, do you understand what we're saying? And they kind of go, oh, yeah, I guess you're right. So, you know, it's a learning curve, because these guys come from all over the country. You know, there are FEMA folk from different regions that aren't going through stuff right now. So they get to come and do the assessments. SBA folk too.
So just to be, just to be clear, the residents should contact the township first?
Yep, they go to the, they'll report into the township. Township then takes that, they roll it up to us. At the county level, we then roll up all the townships into one spreadsheet and send that up to PMA. PMA then submits that to SBA to get them to come in.
And Bill, do we have a point of contact where people should reach out to?
Well, once we get the declaration squared away, then that will activate George Smith as our EOC commander, and he will be the repository for that information. He'll lead the project from there.
Thank you.
Yeah, one thing I have, I have to say, just because I have the opportunity to say it, is Radnor's very fortunate. You have a very good group of first responders, police, fire, EMS, public works. George Smith, your emergency manager coordinator, is a very talented individual. You're fortunate to have somebody of his calendar. He, he's one of the guys, I don't have to worry about him. There are a lot of folks that, you know, maybe I gotta spend a little bit more time with and explain things, and George is always spot-on with his paperwork, so you guys are in good shape.
Chris or George, do you guys have anything you want to add? Chris, do you want to...
Just now that that's activated, to jump on Mr. White's comments. Sergeant Smith will lay out the plans, and we'll make sure that we have information on the web, and we will have our staff here ready to obtain that information. We'll also meet with the stakeholders who are present today, just to find out exactly what we can do for them in the, in the short term, and get them ready for this process, which is somewhat complex and varies, as Larry had gone over, based on total losses in the state and for Delaware County. So they do want to set reasonable expectations, but we are on top of that, and we will have staff here to ensure that the community has complete communication and understanding. There are also some things that we can possibly help out with, to help relax some of that stuff, and we can meet with them, such as Mr. Zankowski's already offered early pickup and debris cleanup. There's things that we will bend over with what I would call our normal services, that we can change up to help the people who are obviously in need, frustrated, and have damage to their property.
And there are different categories of the public assistance, some of which we'll cover. If there was upstaffing for your first responders that occurred, extra time. It won't cover regular time, but it will cover part-timers who were brought in for extra duty, or extra-duty assignments, you know, that were, that were overtime and things like that. So a lot of those expenses also come into play. The extra, as Chris was saying, the extra fees that might be incurred at the tipping floor for disposing of that waste, all of that stuff gets wrapped up into this claim for public assistance, because it's all on how the municipality was able to respond to the disaster.
So for instance, the, what, ten tons of trash that we collected last week, that will go, like, that will wrap in, so the disposal of all that will, will wrap in with this?
Right.
Okay.
It really gets into, for the public assistance piece, it really gets into a cost accounting measure, which I know I've, I think George could probably recite what I've told them about. And I tell every municipality, as soon as something happens, just create, you know, another little cost center, and all the costs that are associated with that event, just dump them right in there, so that you're tracking it as you go along. And then that's, that's the kind of stuff that we pull out. You know, the emergency protective measures, the recovery assets, you know, clearing the roadways of debris, that kind of stuff all comes into play. So disposing of the extra trash, you know?
Does anyone else have any other questions for Larry while he's here? Okay.
In terms of the, that's Mike Feely from Willow Avenue. First responding and bolt pickup and things of that nature, which is...
Did I talk to you on the phone? Your name's...
I gave him the mic.
Do you have like the park in back, you have like a little creek in back of your house?
Yeah.
I think I talked to you on the phone about that creek, about how they wanted you to raise something?
I can't remember. Oh, I can't remember, I've talked to so many people. But, thank you for coming out, and thanks, gang, for the responses. But there's gonna be more, because what happens is, we try to light our, you know, pilot on an old...
Water heater.
And then you realize it doesn't work.
Right.
My AC was working, it went out this weekend, just despite me. All of those things. We didn't even, I got to the shed today, and that was finished, all the drywall, all that stuff that we were looking at. So there's still gonna be more big, large items that folks are trying to get their washer to come back, because we don't have the coin. So if there could be a, maybe another bolt pickup, that would be helpful. In terms of first responding, and putting Mike on the spot, but Trident pools, Mike took his crew and just completely shut the day off, and they were trash pumping all of the homes on Willow Avenue. It's, the hair is standing up in the back of my neck, going into basements, calming folks who, it's the first time that they've been through it, and just literally saving the day. And I imagine, loss of time, dime on their part, and didn't even bat an eye. So, I just, I just want it being known that they were unbelievable.
And I'll be honest with you, pool guys, for some reason, they do that. I mean, like, we had flooding, I live in media. We had flooding, and our pool guy, he gave us two or three of these really nice, like inch-and-a-half submersible pumps, that they use to dump pools. I mean...
Well, I'm talking trash pumps and heavy-duty stuff. So, so I want to thank them. We're not done with the, even the stream cleanup, because it was trash day. So diapers, actual crap in our cars, basements, yards, sheds, garages. And now in the stream, when you see, and the stream is not, it's not a stream. It's four inches, six inches, and then it goes to ten, twelve. It's a stormwater mismanagement problem. And all that stuff is being dumped in there, and now it's on the bank, about seven, eight feet of just toxic crap that we as homeowners, when we can get to it, will go out and try and get. Someone needs to walk the stream and gather all that stuff, all of the trees, everything that's been compromised, that in time will fall on something else of ours. Had happened to my shed before.
And part of what we'll do with the information that we've gotten from George is, we have some volunteer groups. They're called VOAD groups, volunteer organizations active in disaster. And they will come out and help do some of this stuff, clean up, you know, help get stuff out of homes, you know, get it all kind of organized. They'll even do some of the, you know, the drywall tear down and all that kind of stuff, which we can get them in. We just have to approach it in a very organized manner, and start to, you know, get direction from municipalities as to where, what, where and what kind of work needs to be done. And then we can get, because there's, I mean, if I say volunteer organization, you, in your mind, you're probably going, okay, there's a red cross, there's a Salvation Army. There are so many more groups that, I mean, there's twenty or thirty different groups that'll send folks in to help. So, and we can, and some of them have their own little kind of niche mission, others will just do anything. And we can start to get those folks involved in the process, and start to get them out, and they can offer some help doing some of this stuff.
And again, I thank you for that. I think knowing that the stream itself is compromised in a big way, and there's just some really nasty stuff all over the place, may be one that could be utilized that way. Gang, we were, we're only a couple weeks away from kids being at every, every bus stop, where you literally would be kicking in the puddle in one minute, and I think it was like twenty minutes later, you could lose a life. Cory came home frantic and literally couldn't pass the street while his house is filling up. I mean, it's, it's insane. So, you guys have heard me, those who've been around a long time, and it's, it's just a broken record. And I thank you for coming out, I thank the responses, but unfortunately, we'll probably be here again in the next hard rain. Other people go away. We can't even go away on vacation. Here's our conversation. Are you going, who's gonna be back? Do you have the generator? I got the sump pump. Who's staying? We live in twins. You, there are times you physically stay, because it's gonna rain. Plus, it's gonna rain? This wasn't a hurricane, it was a rain. People can't understand it. And then when you show the video of a house completely surrounded by water and waist, chest-high, and then, well, are the water still there? I'm like, no, no, that came and went. It's stormwater. Well, what about the stream? Oh, it's back to six inches again. It's stunning. I still don't, I still don't get it. Pretty rich township. I don't, I don't get it.
It's probably a good idea.
Okay, so, are there any other, do you have a question for Larry?
I did have a continuation on what you mentioned about volunteer organizations. I did get an e...
Yes, I did hear what you were saying about volunteer organizations, and I did receive an email today from State Representative Greg Vitale, and he says that there is a telephone number you can call to request assistance. I don't know what that number is, but if you contact your state representative's office, they can point you on volunteer groups who can assist you with cleanup.
And we can make sure we have that number.
You, I mean, you could... Number will be up on the township's website.
You can certainly work that way. A lot of the groups that we work with, they're looking from, for direction from the municipality, because their concern is if they start to take individual phone calls, and they come to help you, you know, next thing you know, then their neighbor's blowing them up, because they didn't come to help them. So they're looking for more of a community-wide direction. Come down here, help these folks, instead of like, we'll show up at his house, and we'll show up at that house, and we'll show up over at that house, because it's, it's too disjointed for them. Plus, a lot of these volunteers, believe it or not, they're, again, they're actually coming in from other parts of the country. You know, they're, they're moving in, they're staying in churches, they're staying, you know, wherever they find housing, to come in and do this work. So it, sometimes it goes to how great is the scope of the problem, before they send people in, so they know how many people they need to bring. So if they're working off, well, we're coming in to help one, one family, and they get there and the entire neighborhood needs help, it's, you know, they're, it's John Wayne time. They're kind of outgunned and undermanned, and they're, they're not really able to perform as they could. So...
Chip Leiffield, Wayne. When we were, when I was in the Willow Avenue area today, a group of us were talking, and one of the homeowners had reached out to a friend who was a contractor that did a lot of work during Hurricane Sandy in New Jersey. And instead of tearing their houses down completely, a lot of people were raising them up. And I know they do that down at the Eastern Shore. Would money be available for that, short of having a house torn down completely?
That's called elevation. It's a mitigation strategy, which is sometimes employed. And I say sometimes, because I actually can't remember the last time that an elevation project actually went forward in Pennsylvania. Now the focus is on acquisition. So in other words, kind of like in that severe repetitive loss program, where the property owner comes to an agreement with the township for a settlement based on fair market value of the home, FEMA provides monies to the town...
FEMA provides monies to the township to pay the homeowner, the township takes possession of the property and it's turned into open space. And to the point that they even, it's not just like they take the house down, they have to take the foundation out and, you know, make it like there was nothing there before. Just because that's a more effective way to go. Because the reality of it is what, what they have to do now because of the way our communities have developed over time is they have to remodel the floodplain. So whereas you wouldn't be able, if you showed up at a given property and said, I'm going to build a home here, and it would go before planning and they would go, well, that's floodplain, you can't build there. Because it's, and it's not because of anything you did, it's because of stuff that happened upstream. There was so much development upstream of you that now, in certain events, water overwhelms the property. So they're trying to adjust the floodplain to meet what the new norm is for the stormwater management piece of it, which is why some of these storm, stormwater management issues of the holding ponds and the, the tanks that they put in underground, the gravel fields and things like that, where they're trying to delay the water's access to the creek, to hold it on site for a little bit so it's not that sudden rush of water. You know, they're, they're, they're trying everything they can so that they don't have to buy the homes.
The basin?
Like a detention basin, you see a lot more of those, you'll see them putting in the big corrugated tubes under the parking lots, which are designed to try to hold the runoff. But the reality is that in, in some places, they have to reevaluate the floodplain and say, you know, if, if your home was to be built today, we wouldn't let you build it there, or you would, you know, you'd have to build it a different way. And that's kind of the issue, but they just find that the elevation process with a lot of the older homes, like with the Fieldstone foundations, it's just too problematic.
The problem is ours were built 80 some years ago and four, a lot of the homes upstream were achieved and planned properly then. Were hard.
I understand exactly what you're saying. I mean, we regularly have to close Route 1 at the Brandywine. And it's not because of anything that happened right there. It's because up in Exton, they built all these malls and shopping centers and now when it rains up there, that water comes rushing down the Brandywine house and overwhelms Route 1. It's, nobody knew. You know, now they're trying, I said, now they're trying to adjust backwards.
Are there any other specific questions for Larry or...
One specific question in terms of, in terms of new communities or development assessment or...
Would they, would a township or a community have their runoff go into a stream or is that unheard of? That you would, you would have infrastructure, you would have, how, is that, that's, that's the thing that confuses me. I know...
I may be understanding what you're...
The stream, our stream...
Right.
Goes again from four to six inches to 10 feet or whatever it was this past go-around. It just doesn't seem natural to, to allow that to continue to be the main drainage of, of, of stormwater. Like, can it be something different? In your view, like, would, would you build that way?
Well, I mean, I'm not... Larry, if I, if I could, I think...
I'm not an engineer.
There's a couple, a couple of different issues. And one of them, that the goal of tonight's meeting is, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. White or President Browski, is we want to handle the hazards and tackle the problems that was caused by this immediate flood. As you guys are all aware, I've seen you at many meetings, and it's a, it's a passionate issue that the township has spent a lot of time, there's a stormwater advisory committee, and there's a lot of work that our township engineer, Steve Norsecini, I would consider him a subject matter expert along with the group, that is looking at this long-term. And all those projects that we went over, the commissioners have had to evaluate these and getting ready to take action. So I, I just think we should stay on the focus of mitigation because we actually are going to have a meeting with Larry following this with knowing your needs, so if you don't mind, and then we'll set up a meeting with the commissioners and get back to you promptly.
No, that makes sense.
And then there's, there's actually, this is one of these interesting things where in terms of response to flooding, in terms of mitigation, some mitigation and recovery from flooding, that's what our office does. The planning piece and the rest of the mitigation is over in the planning department in their environmental section. They're the folks that get into that and they're the real subject matter experts, I think, in the getting into what you're talking about as to where water goes and stuff like that. So, I mean, as I said, my, my thing is, you know, I deal with the folks at FEMA who try to do hazard mitigation recovery. The only real feasible plan we have right now is to readjust the floodplains. And we do that by taking properties off of the floodplains. That's the, that's the cost-effective measure that they've come up with and that's kind of where FEMA has drawn the line and said, this is, this is what, what we can do, this is what we can't do. So they really don't do elevation projects anymore. I mean, certainly, an individual can do an elevation project. And the folks at planning can be very helpful in terms of telling you what your base flood elevation is and the fact that you should add one to two feet of additional freeboard on top of that base flood elevation and that puts you in good stead with, you know, the flood insurance people and, and, you know, that's about the time that I start looking at my watch and going, am I still here? You know, but I, I come in fixing it behind.
Okay, no, thanks. So we're on track with the recovery stuff, right?
Okay, so, so...
Comment, a question. Just, we are blessed to be at Radnor Township, so we've raised our three children here, super grateful for all the care and support that we will get. I will say, the day of the flood, there was one township truck and two men who drove down the truck once and stopped and talked to Judy and I and asked what they could do while they were in their truck. So the response to Willow Avenue specific for us from the township was zero. We did not have any help. So there was no pumping help.
I accept the...
Well, right, not, not from the township. So that's just my comment, but again, I am extremely grateful and we've had interactions and there's a lot that we are very appreciative of, so I just want that to be understood, that there's two sides to that. But there was no response from the township. My question is, who are the feet on the ground that are going to be walking beyond our property lines and assessing the damage? Like Fenimore, for example, which is still loaded with trash cans and trash lids. And in my opinion, the upkeep of Fenimore is, it's, it's as bare minimum as it can be so you can hardly even see how the stream flows anymore. But knowing the stream, as I do for as long as I have, I know that there's lots of debris and lots of trash and lots of things that have been washed through. So I'm just curious, who are the actual people that are going to be the feet on the ground kind of tromping through these areas to be sure that we are cleaning out our township from the storm?
We just, Commissioner, if you don't mind, once this declaration was made, we will be meeting again, as I stated with Larry, following this with county resources. The stream is a unique safety issue for the collection of that material and how we store it. So we will have basically an action plan in play throughout the night, the information for all the residents, because you know there was flooding all the way across all of Radnor Township and we apologize to everybody who received property damage from all our borders and surrounding outside our borders as that unique store focused on us Upper Marion and some other parts of Delaware County. So we will then prioritize all the projects before everybody leaves tonight. agenda Stefano, we're going to be taking a list which is going to be provided to George Smith, who is now activating and pulling all these resources, all these different things you heard about. Our job now is to pull them in and create solutions or lessen the impact. It may not be perfect, but lessen the impact. So we will have a plan before Mr. White by noon of the big projects and you'll see some action on them as soon as possible and you'll get notification, and I apologize if it didn't come clearly, you'll get notification on the long-term projects that we can handle and what we're allowed to do, what the feds are allowed to do, states allowed to do. So we will get back to you on those. So there's a systematic approach that now falls under Emergency Management Coordinator George Smith, his team up with all the people you heard. And we don't want everybody running and scattering, doing all the different things. We're going to provide you with one source information and points of contact and if we have to leave the phone open 24/7, then that's what'll occur.
Chip Leiffield, I have one last question for George. In your experience, do the townships or municipalities ever pony up like a grant for the people that are affected to help with that significant $5,000 payment? Does the township ever come forward with any money or actual support? Isn't that your area of expertise or...
Well, I'm Larry Clark, you said George Smith. So that's why I'm...
For some reason, I had you as George. I'm sorry, Larry. You make a good George, though, you do. But Larry... Uh, no, I can't say that I have ever heard of grants being put together for residents. I know that at one point, the Commonwealth tried to put together a grant fund which would be used for public assistance, like where we didn't qualify for federal, federal aid. So there was like a state fund. And I'll be honest with you, we contributed a great deal to that getting wiped out in the windstorm of June 2015 that really tore apart the Chester Creek watershed. This event seemed to focus on the Darby Creek watershed, so it's funny how that works out, but there really isn't a good source of money that's available to do that.
Okay, so I want to go ahead and, you know, get to, so we can declare this disaster emergency, then we can go ahead and get a lot of these things in process and start to activate what our township needs to do in order to go ahead and get help. So I am going to go ahead and call for a motion to approve Resolution 201885 Declaration of Disaster Emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. So is there any additional commissioner comment before we take the vote? Is there any staff comment? Is there any additional public comment?
Hi, Kelly Martin, and I'm in the 7th Ward, but we have a property in downtown Wayne and my father was here speaking with you the night of the storm. I know we had emailed you, Mr. Larkin, on Monday during the storm along with Bob Zinkowski and Steve McNellis, we didn't hear back from you yet, but we did get a quick response the following day from Steve McNellis and Bob Zinkowski, they came right out to the property. The issue that we had is that there was a large steel plate placed over the water intake at AT&amp;T. So it's the main drain for that entire area over Hill Road and all of that, and that's the drain that goes under the train tracks into the basin. And this had been done in the past too, and I guess from what I understand, in our meeting on Tuesday, Bob did say that the plate was down. Later on, the forklift came along and it moved the plate off of the storm drain. And it was done, I guess, in an effort, from what I understand, to, I don't know, maybe test and see how much water was coming from AT&amp;T, but what happened was it put seven feet of water into our property. So we had a river running through the property. We have two businesses that were completely wiped out and can never recuperate. And we have other businesses with hundreds of thousands of dollars of damage. And so I, I understand it's not homes and I completely feel for all of the residents in Radnor who are dealing with this. I think that our Public Works Department has done a fantastic job, the first responders did a fantastic job with all that they were tasked to do. But you all need to do something because the $4.6 million that's in the fund would be better off in all of our pockets where we would be doing our own remediation. But no one has the authority to plug up a main drain in the town and decide to flood another property versus this property. So I'd like you to get to the bottom of what, who discovered that. I know back in 2012, Steve Norsecini had mentioned in a meeting, if there was a magic plug to be able to defer water not to go into the, the North Field, the North Wayne Basin, then that would be something that he could try. Shortly thereafter, it was August 7th, 2013, that we ended up with five feet of water in the building. Haven't had it since. It was dealt with then, haven't had it since, and then this storm came along. So we're not talking about a building that always had water. If you're going to continue to allow more building within the township, then you need to get to the bottom of the stormwater, figure out what's going on. So whether, maybe you just put an end to any new building until you can manage what you have. There needs to be something. This is drastic, you're dealing with people's health. We have residents in the township that can't even move back into their homes on Poplar, that they have to be entirely rewired, the entire home reconstructed, the stress level that you're putting on people. It, it's insane and you need to do something. We've been listening to these meetings for years and it's the same thing, let's fund $500,000 for this project, $250,000 for this project, just studying them. Make the decisions, do something, help the people. They can't keep throwing away their cars and their washers and their dryers and having the houses flood over and over again. When I bought my home in Radnor Township, they said they had recently redrawn the floodplains. I knew that the home I was buying was in a floodplain, in Rosemont, in the 7th Ward. I was required to have FEMA, to have flood insurance. I know that, I went into it fully knowing that. The house value, I paid probably less than most of my neighbors because of that. I completely accept that. Most of these people did not buy their homes thinking they were in a floodplain. So you continue to allow building upstream and flooding them out, that's, that's not right. You either need to have the developers do better flood remediation or stop building, stop being greedy for the tax dollars, which is the only thing I can imagine that's happening right now. So the residents, the business owners, they're begging for your help. We have businesses now that have gone out of business because of this storm and because of someone's decision to put a plate over AT&amp;T's lot. So I hope that we quickly come up with a solution. Because I can't, in good faith, I now have empty spaces that no one will go in and I can't, in good faith, sign a lease with someone and say, you might get seven feet of water, you might be completely wiped out in six months, or tonight. It could happen tonight because the plate has been moved and all it is, is the drain is entirely just stuffed with just straw, with wood. I have videos, we've been there 24 hours a day for the last six days. And this is happening in the township and you need to do something about it. Thank you.
So any additional public comment before I call the vote?
Bill, is there any, can you elaborate on what Ms. Martin was talking about? Are you aware of plates being put over graves?
Well, we, we were exchanging emails even earlier today trying to get to the bottom of it. As of the start of this meeting, no, I'm not sure. We had a Public Works Supervisor go up there and take a look. We're still waiting to hear back exactly where it's at and what the condition of the area is.
Is this a practice that's been done before?
I'm sorry?
Is this something that's been done before? Have we put plates over the drains in the past?
Those aren't decisions that I've been involved with, no. I have no idea.
Okay, but somebody will get back to the board with a response?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, any other public comment? Please.
Very well put, thank you. I don't know if I can adequately follow that up, but my name is Sean Waters, lifelong resident around the township, third generation Radnor Township resident and a proud township resident. I'm a product of the little Chicago neighborhood that was so badly damaged and continues to be badly damaged. And more than anything, what I wanted to reiterate is a sincere call to action. Beyond the damage that we're incurring, the dollar amounts, I own three rental properties within that space, grew up within that space, all of which hot water heaters, HVAC units, mold remediation. It's the public safety issue. I was down there at 9:00 AM and witnessed water like I've never seen. God forbid you have a tenant make a poor decision, a toddler, I have a two-year-old daughter, right? Makes a poor decision unsupervised. I have a hard time keeping an eye on my daughter at all times, but you have an issue like that, you have a very, very serious problem and only getting worse. So beyond finances, beyond bureaucracy, beyond red tape, something needs to be done. The properties down there have been in my family 40 years and we have not seen it get to this point. I guess I'll close by saying, Mr. Larkin, thank you for your help in getting our gas turned back on. I had tenants, one of which does have a 10-month-old infant that we couldn't get hot water, couldn't get HVAC on a 90-degree day. This madness needs to stop. So it's not going to happen overnight. I certainly work for a company where there's tons of red tape, I deal with it every day. But I hope you can understand the sincerity... red tape. I deal with it every day. But I hope you can understand the sincerity, sincerity in the impact on business owners, on residents, on everyday people. So please, thank you.
Just real quick, I had the opportunity to talk to several people today. And the covering of the drain is, does not seem to be a great mystery. I talked to Gail Morrison and Ken Taylor, both activists on this issue. And they said it was the manager covered it up. So if that's the case, I don't know. I was, as a former resident of Willow Avenue, I was thrilled when $100,000 stormwater grant was made available for the Willow Avenue area. I was shocked. There was litigation in the 2nd Ward, when it had to be, it was a state grant, had to be spent. I was shocked that it was used to make a comfort station. A comfort station, I don't think really helps the people on Willow Avenue. I just think there could have, something minor, but something could have been done, at least cleaning out the stream bed and cleaning up the area could have been done with that money. I think that was, I think that was wrong to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any additional public comment? All right, then I'm going to go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor of Resolution 201885 Declaration of Disaster Emergency for Radnor Township, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to nothing. Okay, so briefly, we have a letter that had been drafted. This was drafted last week. It was prior to the, I guess, there has been a disaster declaration declared for Delaware County, correct? Larry, am I correct? Did that come out on Saturday from the governor?
Again, I have to apologize. I've been on vacation for four days. So I haven't seen that yet.
Okay. I'm pretty sure it has. So we, this was in response, you know, the governor came and he was down in Upper Darby and Darby Townships. And we felt as if we needed to, Commissioner Abel contacted me, and he and myself and Commissioner Clark worked on this letter, so that, you know, we could communicate to the governor what exactly had happened in Radnor Township. We've compiled and will be sending along with this, the video that the township put together that was shown at our meeting last week, which detailed a lot of the flooding, in photographs and videos. We'll be sending that information as well. This letter, we are proposing for the entire board to sign, to send. And in order to do so, we need to just make sure that everyone is good with it. I think at the time, we asked that he consider a disaster declaration for Delaware County, which I think has been done. So I'm suggesting proposing that to making it, asking for a federal disaster declaration and changing that language in the letter. Bill, are you making?
Yeah, you're talking about amending the letter to ask the governor to make sure he's going up the chain and asking FEMA for the federal declaration?
Yes, yes, as well. So that...
And just one real quick point. On Governor Wolf's webpage, it does talk, it has a proclamation that he enacted declaring a state of emergency for several Pennsylvania counties, including Delaware County. In the proclamation, he identifies $6 million in state funds for immediate response, as well as activating the state's EOC and all of the abilities that they have to put those types of things into action. So how that translates down to the Delaware County level, I'm not sure. But as Larry pointed out earlier, our declaration starts the process, working back up and builds the foundation for all those things that Larry identified earlier.
All right. So the other commissioners, Jake, I see you have made some edits. Do you want to change anything?
First, I want to thank Commissioner Borowski and Commissioner Clark for, you know, working together on this letter. You know, we don't always, you know, these meetings are sometimes hard to watch, because there's a lot of disagreement going on. But I liked the opportunity to work with Commissioner Borowski, Commissioner Clark, when we really needed it. You know, this storm hit everybody, and it impacted residents throughout the township. And this is a letter that will go to the governor and says, you know, we were disappointed you didn't come and talk to the residents and see firsthand, because it was widespread. And he would have gotten a real good firsthand view of how impactful this storm was. But as you said, he did come. And so in paragraph five, we should amend it to read, "We are disappointed you were not able to see firsthand the devastation experienced in Radnor Township during your visit to Delaware County on Thursday, August 16."
Okay, we can make those edits. Did anyone else have any changes to the letter? Or can I get consensus, and in Commissioner Booker and Commissioner Farhi's absence, consensus that it is okay to go ahead and send this letter, and that all board members will sign on to this? At least those of us here?
Yep.
Yep. Okay. All right, then we will go ahead and send that. Mr. White, Bill, was there something else you wanted to add around what we can do as a township? Something that you and Commissioner Larkin had worked on?
Yeah, a couple bullet points. First of all, with our Public Works crews, this Wednesday again, we'll offer the bulk pickup. So if folks have more items that are in their homes or businesses that need to come out, our Public Works crews will continue to pick those up. So that's this Wednesday again. And as we proceed, if the demand is still there, if the need is still there, we'll make those decisions on a week-by-week basis. We'll just update the website accordingly. And we'll use the township's alert notification system to send the word out to residents. So if you're not signed up, we would encourage residents to sign up for the township's alert. You can choose whether you want the weather alerts or not. I know that on, I think it was Saturday or Sunday morning at about 3:00 AM, most of us were awakened with the flood watch call. We got a lot of folks unchecking that box the next day. But the idea behind the system is that if there's a weather emergency, and it does happen in the middle of the night, that you're notified. But that's our primary way of being able to communicate with folks, being able to push messages. Otherwise, the website is a way for folks, oops, folks can go out and pull them. So this Wednesday, for sure, we'll go out and we'll pick them up. And then I just ask everyone if they could tune into the website or sign up for the alert. If you're not already, we'll send one out, letting everybody know about future pickups. At the same time, we also would ask if the board would consider a motion to waive any of the permitting fees associated with putting things back together again, for those who have been affected by the floods, whether it be fences, sheds, electrical systems, things that the township would require a permit for and an associated fee for. If it was directly related to the storm event, if the board would so consider, we would waive those fees. Residents and businesses would still need to pull permits and still work with our codes and engineering departments, depending on what the project is, to get the necessary paperwork. But the fees associated with those would be waived. In talking with the Community Development Department earlier today, we know there's a handful of folks that already pulled permits. If the motion's passed tonight, we could issue refunds on those.
Is that something that we can do just by consensus? We don't need an ordinance or resolution, I assume? You're looking for direction?
Well, if we do a motion tonight, it would help, it would allow us to immediately issue the refunds and to waive fees for folks to come in. We'd like to back that up then on the September 10 meeting with a formal resolution, just so it's in paper form. It's a little bit easier for administratively for us to do, if we've got the piece of paper. It makes the communication of the program a little bit clearer. Because sometimes with motions, the wording and the intent or the scope has a tendency to creep a little bit. But when it's in a resolution form, it's pretty straightforward. So a motion tonight agreeing that, or the board agreeing to that, would get the ball rolling. And then we'd formalize it September 10.
I would move for that. To be a little bit more clear, I guess I would move for the board to give direction to our staff, to reimburse people who have already paid fees for stormwater-related damage incurred in the storm of Monday a week ago, and to waive fees on repairs to stormwater damage caused by the same event until our following meeting, when we can put a more formal resolution together.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor?
Second.
Okay. Any commissioner comment with regards to that? I think it's an excellent idea. Thank you. Bill and Jack are working on that. Is there any staff comment? Any public comment? Okay, then I'm going to call the vote. So all those in favor of giving direction to the staff to reimburse those who've already sought permitting and paid for permitting fees for stormwater-related damage from the storm Monday a week ago, as well as to waive fees for anyone seeking future, anyone seeking permitting for any additional damages incurred by the storm of Monday a week ago, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to nothing. Okay, so then we'll work on having a more formal resolution. And so, Bill, if people have, they should come in, is there anything that they need to bring? Is there anything that they will need to have with them, so that they can, you know, this isn't open the door for someone who wanted, three years ago, you know, has been wanting for three years to build a fence or something like that. This is for people who have honestly been, you know, sustained severe, you know, sustained damage based on the storm last Monday.
Yeah. Photographic evidence will be, is critical. We know, generally, based on the phone calls we received, we know where the flooding occurred. So we have an idea already of those impacted areas. But the photographs will go a long way, as well as, I mean, residents are going to need those anyway, as we start walking down the road with the county, if the SBA loans become available. So hopefully, folks have those. But that's something that our Community Development Department will be looking for as part of the permit application.
And how will we communicate this out? Will we be able to put this up on the website? Can, how will we let people know? Jack, and I guess the commissioners can also share that out amongst the residents. Can you provide, like, some specific language, so that we're all saying the same thing to everybody?
We can, with the approval of the motion, what we'll do is we'll put a little press release together that we can, we'll use all of our publication mediums. And then we can send it out to all the commissioners as well. And then you guys can push it out to your email list. So it'll be available on all those sites. And then folks can share them from there.
All right. So is there anything else that you, or the chief, or George, anything else that anyone wants to share that will help, you know, provide, that the township is doing right now in the immediate, to support the residents? Or do you think you guys have kind of covered it all? And then we'll just be moving forward based on what, now that we've made the disaster declaration, and what the county says to us?
What we would like is to get your emails and address and names. If you could, before you leave, stop and see Jen DiStefano here, so we can record it. And then once everything is populated on EM or our website, we can push it out to you. So you're one of the first to get it. You don't have to constantly look. So when it's up and ready for you, it'll be pushed to you, saying, hey, here's a direct connect. And this is what we're putting forward, whether what you need as a property owner, or as the section of the community, what you need to see or bring to our attention, like the stream beds or erosion that's maybe not readily available through our windshield views for damage. So if you could stop, we're going to make sure you get the information pushed to you first.
Anything else? We're good? Okay. So before we go into public comment, Jack, oh, sorry, Jake, oh, Jack, I had, did you have something you wanted?
I asked Lisa if I could just have two quick minutes before public comment, because there's been a lot of calls to action, and I want them to keep coming. But I also want to make sure that everybody understands where we are in the process. A couple of meetings back, two meetings back, the board voted on a series of five stormwater projects. They are qualitatively different from what we have done in the past, in the sense that we have not previously had shovel-ready projects. What we've asked design consultants to come in and do for us, Meliora, is not continue to study the problem, because we've come to the conclusion as a township, that Radnor actually floods. And we don't really need more study in that sense. But we've asked them to come to us with a series of shovel-ready projects. And I'm in contact with Meliora. I'll continue to be in contact with Meliora. They're telling me that they're expecting to have designs for us in calendar 2019, at which point, the board is going to have to make the decision, are the projects that are brought to us ones that are feasible for us to do. The biggest single project that we've asked them to look at is an enormous revision to stormwater flow in North Wayne. It's originally been billed as the poplar bypass, but it's going to end up being considerably larger than that. The concept in its base form is to have a large pipe that would capture water as it comes down poplar, as well as the adjacent streets, and then shunt it into an underground basin under Cowan Park. That's kind of the high-level concept that we went to them with. And we said, please tell us how to make this work. Give us plans, so that we can literally start digging. I assume that they're going to come back with some version of that. They may come back and say, we can't make this work, but here's Plan B. But the concept is, give us something that will at least start to solve the problem in a major, major way. So that was step one. Step two is going to be a vote by the board. Once we get plans, you'll be hearing from me, from other members of the board, with here's how much it's going to cost, and here's what it's going to do. And it's at that point that we need all of you to come out and give us the benefit of your insights and your feedback. In the interim, I know that a bunch of us are going to be working on ways to streamline the process. So this doesn't get caught in a bureaucratic nightmare, where we review the project with 1,000 different experts, and it dies by 1,000 cuts. I know that we're also going to be looking for ways to get additional funding, because this is going to almost certainly require more money than we have in the stormwater fund right now. I'd love it if they came back and they said that this was only going to be $1 million, and we can give all the extra money back. That's wildly unlikely. So we're going to be looking for grants from the state and federal governments. We're going to be looking for synergies, where we can use money from, for instance, the sanitary sewer fund. Not to just raid it, but we can maybe do two projects at the same time, so we save money. We take up the blacktop on the street, that can be charged against both funds. Then we're going to do both stormwater and sanitary sewer simultaneously. When the blacktop goes back on top, that again gets paid for by both funds, instead of just coming out of the stormwater fund. So state and federal grants, we're looking for additional monies that we can get internally for synergies. But really, what I need you guys to come back out in order to fight for this, because this is my number one issue. I represent North Wayne. I represent pretty much every part of my district floods. Certainly, last Monday it did. I need you guys to stay involved. I need you to come back. And I need you to have a call for action. But I also don't want everybody, because I know I see some familiar faces who have heard me make a lot of noise about this in the past, and are up to date. I see a lot of other people who don't necessarily know where we stand in the process. I just don't want you to think that we haven't done anything yet. We're literally waiting for the plan, so we can start digging. That's where we are in the process.
Jake, did you have?
Well, two comments. I just want to, on top of Commissioner Larkin's comments, just want to remind people, too, that we have some standards, water quality standards we have to meet over the next five years, too. So we have to also keep that in mind as we go forward on these projects. But I have a question, and we don't have anyone from Public Works here tonight. They closed down the bridge, or the sidewalk, by Phillipone Park tonight. Do we, is that storm damage-related? And if so, do we know what the timeframe is?
So it came to our attention this afternoon that the culvert is undermined. Some large pieces of the bricks have come apart, and which exposed the metal structure supporting the sidewalk underneath. And it is, that is shown to be deteriorated. So our engineer shut that sidewalk down for those purposes. Almost certainly, the bricks came out as a result of the flood, or the waters. I'm not sure that the structure underneath is deteriorated from the water, just time. But that's why it's been shut down.
So they shut it down on the park side, but left it open, left the sidewalk open on the opposite side. Is there reason to believe that the other side will, has suffered damage, too, and needs to be shut down?
Well, our engineer was out inspecting the entire culvert. I can't speak for him other than to say that he felt that the park side was, took the biggest brunt of the hit, of the flow of water. biggest brunt of the hit of the flow of water, and that's the part, that's the sidewalk he didn't feel comfortable with keeping open, and the other side was still safe.
Okay, I will go ahead and call for any public comment, or final public comment period?
This is Ted Bearman on Poplar Avenue. I had a question and a comment about the emergency alert system people were talking about. I'm assuming that would include some kind of app on a smartphone. But a while ago, there was an elderly woman on my block who is somewhat in her 90s, and I'm wondering if there might be alternative alert systems for people who might not be adept with smartphone technology.
Is that, it does call, so it's, you can sign up and it will, it will call your home at whatever number you give it. I don't know, Bill, if you want to...
Yeah, if the issue is the person might not be tech-savvy enough to know how to sign up, or it may just, folks can call and ask for Jim Doling and give Jim the information over the phone, and he will create the account for them. If they don't feel comfortable calling, they could come in and visit in person, and we can set those accounts up. We can help people one-on-one as needed. Other than that, once, once the account is set up and your preferences are set, it will call your cell phone, it'll call your home phone. If you sign up for text messages and emails, you'll get those as well. So once, once the account's set up, it, it, it works based on what's, what the township's sending out.
Could we add that to that page so that, you know, if somebody does need assistance that they can call Jim? I don't know that that's clearly marked, because I've been sending out that link to my constituents, so if we could just...
We can, yes.
Great, thank you. Evening.
Chipley Field, real quick. I'm not that familiar with this project going down Poplar Avenue that Mr. Larkin was speaking of, but on, just on the surface from what I hear, it sounds pretty much like a boondoggle. Water doesn't run down Poplar Avenue to Radnor Street Road. It runs up. So I don't know how your pipe's going to be running it down there. And secondly, Cowan Field was completely underwater during the storm. Doesn't have any capacity to store additional water. And there's plenty of houses downstream from that, plus the university. So I would, I know people don't like studying things, but somebody's got to really put their thinking caps on, because the township has a horrible reputation for doing stormwater management. You'd be hard-pressed to find anything that they've done successfully. Look at the middle school, $1 million spent, and it floods. So I understand the urgency, but I think the concept has to be looked at and looked at and looked at before you move forward, because it sounds like a huge boondoggle to me. But we'll see, see when the project comes forward.
Thank you. Any other additional public comment? Okay, so before I call for adjournment, I would just like to send a special shout-out to our township staff, certainly our police. We have a representative from our fire company as well, all of whom, I think, responded and performed very valiantly last Monday to support our neighbors, many water rescues, people who had driven into, you know, water, became overwhelmed with water. You know, it's, it's been a very difficult time, I know for so many of you, and we are going to work as hard as we can to try to make things better and make some improvements, not just for North Wayne, but I know Commissioner Clark's area in South Wayne, Commissioner Abel's area as well. So we are going to be working on that, and I think that I can comfortably speak for those of us here tonight and the rest of the board is that we are committed to, we know that stormwater is a priority, and that is definitely a priority for this board moving forward. So I want to thank you all for coming out tonight. I want to thank our staff, and, you know, hopefully we can move forward and get some things going to help. Anyone else? Anything else? No? All right, then I will make a move for adjournment. Motion?
So move second.
Second? All right, all those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Thank you very much.